We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee Municipal Authority for January 10th, 2022. We will have the invocation and the flag salute. Let us stand. Let us pray. God, we thank you for this day. We give you grace and kindness for all that you've done for us. And oh, God, we pray that that grace and kindness will be extended back. Father, we pray for direction as we attempt to lead your city. For Lord, this is not ours. We are only stewards for what you have allowed us to have. Give us this day for grace and prosperity. In Jesus's name, we pray. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds. Stephanie Morgan. Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of December 13th, 2021, or take other necessary action.
We have the minutes before us on tonight for the December 13th, 2021 meeting. Do we have any corrections to the minutes or a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee. Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending December 31st, 2021, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the authority, do you have the claims for you? There we go. There's a power button on these things, isn't there? All right, yes, Chairman and members of the authority, you do have the claims before you. We do recommend approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions from the authority on the claims?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the claims? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee. Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number three.
Consider approval of resolution number 2887, authorizing the Muskogee Municipal Authority to issue its sales tax revenue note, series 2022, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $13,850,000, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the note to be sold on a negotiated basis, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement by and between the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma, and the authority pertaining to a year-to-year pledge of certain sales and use tax revenue, approving and authorizing execution of series 2022 supplemental note indenture, authorizing the issuance and securing the payment of the note, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing and directing the execution of the note and other documents relating to the transaction, and containing other provisions relating thereto, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the authority. You recall, last month, we did ask this body authorized us to go solicit bids for financing for the second round of our CIP street projects. As you remember, in 2019, the citizens passed the dedicated sales tax for streets, and we did borrow money once, and at that time, we knew we were going to borrow money again to finalize those CIP street projects. So this is the second round of the borrowing, and what we have is asking you, because of our schedule this month and because of the timeliness, we don't have a meeting next week, for instance, that due to the timing of the solicitation, that we're authorized to accept bids and any bid, the lowest bid, under 1.75%, that would then be accepted. If it's above that, we would have to come back to the council and this authority. So that is a very good low interest rate, as you know. So that's the only difference from how we've done things previously, is we've set a maximum interest rate that we're willing to pay. And if we get appropriate offers for financing under that amount, the chairman would have the authority to execute that agreement. We do recommend approval. We have our bond counsel and our financial advisor here to answer any questions about how we got to this point. But I think you're familiar with the path on how we got here, but they can answer any questions. We would ask you to approve this, subject to the city council meeting later, where there's a companion agenda item that would allow us, we have to be authorized by the city council for the authority to borrow the money. So we would ask that this be approved pending city council approval later tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we have any questions concerning item number three?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you guys just give us an update or bring us back up to how we got here?
Yes, absolutely. I wanted to make sure if you were addressing the question to me. Absolutely. So we, in 2018, the city authorized us to, the staff, to apply to the City of Muskogee Foundation for a matching grant. The matching grant would be to allow us to ask the citizens to vote for a temporary street sales tax. We asked the foundation to match $2 million of sales tax collections for each year of the temporary sales tax, which is six years. So the voters then in the fall, or in the spring, approved that sales tax, and the foundation approved the grant. And so we had approximately $4 million a year coming in, directly related to this CIP sales tax, approximately $2 million from sales tax and approximately $2 million from a match from the foundation. Rather than wait for all of that money to come in and do the roads as they came along, the council authorized, and it was part of the vote of the people, authorizing us to pay debt service with that vote, with the CIP money. So we said, let's not, let's speed this up. So we're trying to do it in four years rather than six. And so to do that, we have to borrow money to do that. We borrowed the first round of money about a year and a half ago in 2020, and at that time, we said there'll be a second round of borrowing, and this is the time for that. Interest rate environment is still favorable to borrowing. This lets us do exactly what we said we would do to the people, and we told them we would need to borrow money to do it. And we paid back from the City Muskogee Foundation matching grant and our dedicated sales tax that the voters voted on.
So is our sales tax falling in line with the $2 million?
Yes, we've collected well above the $2 million each year that we projected the sales tax. We've gotten the full match. Pardon me, our agreement with the foundation is, once we hit the $2 million mark for a fiscal year or for the year, we submit and they give us $2 million at once. So through the first two years, we've received those first two milestones of $2 million payments from the City Muskogee Foundation.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Any other questions, or do we have motions to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number three. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We will now adjourn the Muskogee Municipal Authority meeting and call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for January 10th, 2022. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds. Stephanie Morgan. Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Do we have a motion to excuse Counselor Reynolds and Counselor Morgan?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Counselors Morgan and Reynolds. Any discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now consider approval of the minutes for the special call city council meeting for November 15th, 2021. Special call city council, December 6th, 2021. Regular session, city council, December 13th, 2021. Special call city council, December 16th, 2021. Do we have a motion or any question on those minutes?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on those minutes as read. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items number one through nine. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, or is there any item that needs to be moved to the regular agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number 10.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of ordinance number 4148A to rezone property addressed as 2408 West Broadway, being more particularly described in the ordinance from C1 Local Commercial to R1 Single Family Residential, and if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Callahan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request from Haven House Incorporated. It is a nonprofit entity that owns this property that is requesting to downzone the property from the C1 Local Commercial to the R1 Single Family Residential in order to sell the property. The applicant that is purchasing the property needs to have the correct zoning classification for their VA loan lender requirements. And it's surrounded by residential. The future land use map does show residential in the area, and staff does recommend approval and Public Works recommended approval.
We don't have anyone sign up to speak to this item, so we will now close the public hearing and take any questions or concerns from the council at this time. Questions from the council, or do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item passes. Item number 11.
Discuss and make necessary recommendations to staff related to the adoption of a specific use permit ordinance.
Counselor Hoos.
This is going to go to the city attorney's office.
Thank you, Counselor Hoos. Mayor, members of council, you remember from the retreat, this item came up as a potential modification to our current zoning regulations. This would implement a specific use permit. As you recall, a specific use permit would allow us to specifically analyze things that may affect an area on a broader area than normal zoning regulations. Currently, our zoning is kind of a A, B, C. You fit into one of the categories, and that's what's going to happen. There are certain things that exceed those scopes or may not fit within certain areas perfectly and need more strict scrutiny as we look at them, figure out where they fit, and figure out if any additional terms or conditions might be necessary to ensure that the community overall is looked at, protected, and that we ensure that the growth and expansion we are wanting to encourage can happen in a way that's beneficial and not detrimental. So what you have before you is proposed ordinance. This is for your discussion and our recommendations, and I'll briefly go through how it lays out. First, this is authorized by state statute. It's been through litigation. It's been upheld, and it allows us to do this using our standards to best support what we think is best for the City of Muskogee and its citizens. So what we do is, we're putting together a plan that allows us to require someone, if they want to do certain businesses that are articulated herein, and we'll get to the list in a moment, to make an application to the planning commission. That is step, I'm sorry, to staff. That's step one. Staff will review what their requirements are, what their needs are, what the impact on the community is. Staff will then make a recommendation to planning commission. Planning commission will have a public hearing, will require that everyone within 300 feet, like most of our other zoning, be notified, have the ability to come and be heard, and we will look at the facts and the evidence through planning commission as to what best suits and whether the specific use permit should be granted. Regardless of the finding of planning commission, much like other zoning requirements, their recommendation, sorry, not a recommendation, they're going to make a determination. That determination is then going to be sent up to you to either support and uphold their determination, to reject their determination, or you can review and make independent findings and input, adding conditions, taking off conditions, as you see fit as council, for the final determination. These can be very expansive from what normal zoning is. Normal zoning is if you fit into a category, you get to go there. What this would allow us to do is put things which are specific to that business or entity, restriction, requirement, or otherwise, to ensure that we're meeting their needs as well as they meet our needs. So as that process goes through, there's a certain time limit. So once they're granted this, it's not granted in perpetuity. Not only is it not granted in perpetuity, but it also, if they choose not to use it, or if they go out of business after two years, they're going to have to come back. That way, we continue to make sure it's meeting the needs of that area and not becoming intrusive. So as we talked about in the council retreat, we formed a committee of myself, the city attorney, the city planner, and the city manager, and we reviewed what some of the other cities had done. This list is a dynamic list, and this will allow us to change it, modify it, grow it, shorten it, add, subtract, as necessary. Every community's done that. And many communities have a laundry list of things. We didn't want to start out just taking in their laundry list. So we started small, and we looked at things which have the largest impact on the community potentially. Those were specifically prisons and jails, mining, adult entertainment, landfills, public facilities, churches, windmills, halfway houses, nightclubs, marijuana business, and commercial uses and crematories. Those things are things which have the ability to impact an area, and maybe impact an area in a way which is not best suited to a normal zoning classification when we talk about commercial, residential, industrial, and all the subcategories that go within those. So we would look at each applicant in and of themselves, on their own terms, where they want to go, and look at the community and allow the community to have input. We always like when our community lets us know what they're thinking or feeling. So this allows inclusiveness. It allows three levels of review, from staff to planning commission to council. So nothing is going to be arbitrary or capricious or be done lightly. It's going to have a hearing process, and everything that we do or determine will be determined by the facts and the needs of the community. With this, what we've set for is, when they make the petition to do this, it's a $100 fee to get the ball rolling. The fees are set really to cover staff time as we process through and aid them in the process. We will also have to have a public hearing. That public hearing will have to be published. There's going to be costs associated with that. So again, that's where the fee is. And then ultimately, the appeals and confirmation by city council, if they don't like determinations, that can come to you. You have the ultimate say. This is a proven way of allowing us to better meet the needs and the concerns of our community with these items. And what we've brought this forward to you today is to review what we have. It's subject to modification. We're not asking for action tonight. This is for discussion and recommendations. Whatever those are, we will take to planning commission, which is the process. They will review it once they make their final determination recommendations. We'll bring it back to you for final approval if that's your wishes. The one thing I will say to look at specifically is that list of businesses or entities that we have here, it's a very short list. We can add or take off as you see fit. That is my kind of ten cent speech on this. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Hoos, this was your item. Do you have any questions?
No, I just want to, some questions. So if people have a business that falls in this list right now, and they want to say their business burns down or anything, they can still rebuild and continue with where they're at?
Correct. Any existing business is currently grandfathered. We're not changing that.
So, okay, so a lot of the concerns that we had moving forward from trying to make some zoning issues, this really kind of is a place where we meet in the middle with different people in our community and what's, you know, best for the city and not just strict guidelines that we were trying to set in place.
Correct. And what I would say on this is, our zoning is really designed for kind of a one-size-fits-all. If you fit within a category, you go there. But we're realizing there are certain industries and certain businesses which do have that broader impact and might require us to be able to look and see how we make it best for them. We aren't here to discourage businesses. This is not to try to prevent any growth. And this, in fact, might allow us to encourage or support growth in a way that wouldn't normally work under just the tick-the-box zoning that we currently have.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Beasie or Dr. Hoos on tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I recognize.
Yes, Mr. Van.
I think item 12 is coming up. I think it's going to be a good idea on that item there, this new rule, you know, what you're bringing up, Mr. Beast, for this item. So that's, you know, that's what I think. And I hope, you know, we discuss it thoroughly when we get to it.
I'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Trump.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Any other discussions on this item?
Mayor, one thing I did want to add. We've had conversations with the planning director on when to get this in front of the planning commission, and we're planning on having the public hearing on February 7th. That will give us the 15 days publication in order to hold a public hearing for planning commission to review and make any recommendations. And then with your permission, we will do a special call on that 7th, February 7th, for the council to review and take action on this ordinance. The proposal, as it moves forward, will be to include an emergency, and so it will be effective, if there are no hiccups, by the end of the week, the week beginning February 7th. It'll be published that Friday, so that'll be the effective date of this ordinance, presuming everything goes forward as planned.
So today, we would move for approval so that it can go to the planning commission?
No, we're not asking for any approval.
Okay.
This is for discussion.
This is for discussion, and then it'll go to planning.
And between now and planning, if any of you would like to talk to me more about it, or if there's something for the list, you can contact us at any point, or if you have recommendations for things to be added or taken off tonight, we can take that as well when we present this to planning commission.
And the reason I pointed out those deadlines, the dates, is because any of our zoning ordinances, none of them have emergencies. So they're not effective until 30 days after publication. So any of the zoning requests that come forward tonight or in the future will not be effective until this ordinance is effective, based on our proposed timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. So this is a discussion item only. Any other questions from the council?
I had a question. Is it any reason that we're making this an emergency item, Mr. Tucker?
The emergency would be to move this forward quicker because this is something that has been discussed with council a couple of times, and the urgency for moving forward additional regulations has been made, has been addressed to staff. And so that's one of the mechanisms that we can use to enact an ordinance much quicker, is to declare it an emergency, particularly because the individual items, which are included in section 902303, those different categories, because those are what we believe to have the largest impact on the community, were they to be in effect now. And so in this case, it allows us to issue regulations on those specific uses and impose operational conditions and safeguard, thus to benefit the community. So with those things taken as one, we felt it important to move it forward as an emergency. But that ultimately is a decision of the council, whether to vote the emergency or not.
Thank you.
But if the emergent, just to clarify, if this is brought forward with an emergency as recommended by the planning commission, and the city council does not approve the emergency, it will still go into effect, but it will not go into effect immediately. It will go into effect 30 days from publication. So it just delays the time that it goes into effect. That's the difference with an emergency or not an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any other discussion on that item? Thank you, Mr. Beasie. Item number 12.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval, excuse me, of ordinance number 4131A to rezone property addressed as 5028 West Oak Mulgy, being more particularly described in the ordinance from C1 Local Commercial to C2 General Commercial, and if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Callahan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an item that we have heard before. It was tabled from a November meeting to this meeting. It is a request from Ronnie Boswell. He's the applicant. The owner is Inhofe Land and Cattle, and it is to request to rezone the property from C1 Local Commercial to C2 General Commercial. The address is 5028 West Oak Mulgy. Yeah, the statement from the applicant is, the reasoning for the rezoning is to increase lease options. This is the map of the property. It is along West Oak Mulgy. This is the atlas map that shows the existing zoning and then the zoning on the surrounding area. This is the site. There is two different parts. There was that one-time a restaurant, and then this was an old tire shop, metal building with garage doors and garage use. This shows the current zoning classifications around the surrounding property. That is the request to go from the C1 Local Commercial to the C2 zoning, local commercial, general commercial, sorry, zoning classification, and it is to allow for more options for the C2 based on the type of the building that he does have that is existing. Planning commission denied the request. Public Works took no action, and as I said, it's been heard before council, but it was tabled to this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. We don't have anyone sign up to speak to this item. We will now close the public hearing and take comments and questions from the council. Council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I recognize?
Yes, Mr. Van.
My understanding is, Ms. Callahan, that this building here was going to be considered as a grow house for marijuana?
I have, I mean, that would be an assumption, but I was not told that, so.
Well, the meetings we had before.
That was the assumption.
That's been the assumption.
Or the fear, because a C2 zoning classification, like Mr. Beasie was saying, is that it would automatically allow that for C2 zoning classification. The C1 requires either a special exception from the Board of Adjustment. Anything that's currently zoned C2 could have marijuana, and there would not be any discussion about it. And this way, with a specific use permit, anything, even if it is zoned C2, would still require the specific use permit for marijuana use or any of those other uses listed in that use permit ordinance.
So we would still have to go to what Mr. Beast is talking about, correct?
Yes, even if it was zoned C2.
Okay.
Which, or was approved, it would still have to go before the specific use permit if everything was approved on the specific use permit ordinance.
Well, myself personally, I live probably, I'm going to say, three blocks down the street from this building, and it's all around residential areas. And if it is going to be a marijuana grow, I totally disagree. Because you see what it has done to our downtown Muskogee. You see how it smells, and how that marijuana smells all the time. And I know by law that you allowed, a person that has a license, has allowed so many plants in their yard. I understand that. But I'm going on what I know with this post office, that we've had problem after problem after problem. We have found them. That still ain't doing any good. O, what's it called? O M M A? They're not doing us any good. And like I say, it's just one stinky problem. We have people come from out of town, come to our civic center. It smells. And I hate for them to be getting that residential area, in that neighborhood, with children around it. Don't get me wrong, I don't have a thing against marijuana. I told you this time and time again. But when it comes to being in a residential area, I have a big problem with that. And right next to that is trailers. All the back, you've got people's houses. Down from me, you got residents. I just don't want that smell. In my area where I live, and we got two ladies here, they didn't sign up to speak, but I'm pretty sure they feel the same way I do. This right here needs to be waited on to see about if it is going to be a marijuana grow place. Because, like I say, my opinion up here, nobody up here would want to walk out their door, especially right there where those trailers are, right across the street. You can tell me all you want about the filters. Well, we tried it at the court, I mean, at the post office, and it's still, ain't been nothing done. And they tried everything. But when we walk out that door tonight, it may be smelling, it may not. That's just, that's just Councilman Van up here. I'm totally against it. And I'd just rather have it wait to this zoning. But planning and zoning turn it down, that's what those, that committee is for, to help us make decisions up here. Sometimes we forget when we put these commissions together and boards, they're to help the council make decisions. So I'm pleading with the council up here tonight. Put your Put yourself in my place, living right there, living, having to live by it. See, if you want that in your, in your neighborhood, the way it is at that post office. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Mr. Tucker, the question I have is, if we deny the zoning classi- reclassification tonight, and the applicant comes back with a more specified use that's not marijuana, would they have to apply again for it to be rezoned?
Yes.
If it passes tonight, and the applicant decides that they do want it for marijuana purposes, by that time, will it still have to go through the new process?
Yes.
It will have to go through the new process.
Assuming everyth- so this will go into effect if the council, let me get my calendar here. If the council passes this tonight.
Should be February fourteenth.
February fourteenth is the publication day.
That's what we said, happy Valentine's.
Yes. And so then, then it will be zoned by March fourteenth, give or take a day, depending on what day of the week that falls.
No, it would be approved February fourteenth.
February fourteenth.
Because, um, thirty days from Friday.
So, so it'll be February fourteenth. So, um, our special use permit, uh, progress plan is that it will be in front of you by, um, February seventh, meaning it would then be approved on the eleventh of February. So it'll be before the effective date of this ordinance. So it would have to then go through the, um, special use permit process. Now, just to clarify, the existing zoning Tish on this property is, uh, C one. And so regardless, the applicant still could go to the board of adjustment and get a special, uh.
Exemption.
Exemption.
Exception.
To operate without any zoning change. And that would be up to the planning, the, uh, board of adjustment. But that has not happened.
So what I'm considering, uh, with the council's pleasure is, why wouldn't we take action on this after we go through the other process, as discussed in item number eleven? Could we do that?
You can, yes. That would just mean that you would need to table this until after, um, February eleventh. So February, whatever the next meeting, around the fourteenth is.
Unless you put it on the special call February seventh, or?
Yeah.
The reason being is because I think that, uh, in light of the fact that we've had so much conversation about rezoning things into the C two, that between now and the times that the rules come back, uh, with the approval and recommendations of planning and zoning, uh, that we may not take action on any C twos until we see what the new rules look like.
Sure.
Since we're given a shorter time window for them to get those rules back to us. Does that make sense to the council?
Perfectly makes sense to me, Mr. Mayor. Can I say one more thing?
Yes, Mr. Van.
Another thing is, when we did do the post office, the inspectors on that, on that post office that approved this, that post office is what they're doing right now. We didn't have no real inspectors. You can't tell me we did. And Roy, you know and I know, I mean, how much did we have to fine him per that, when we went over there at the post office?
Was it five thousand? Twenty-five hundred or so?
Twenty-five.
Uh, over the course of a number of citations, that was the total.
Well, we have, we've had, we've had to give them a citation, citation, citation. To get their attention, and we still didn't got their attention.
Well, they've made significant improvements based upon what it was prior to that.
But we still got that smell. Right?
There is still some odor, but again, as, as you and I spoke privately, uh, that's a reasonableness standard. And so we were unable to get anyone to come in and say that it had impacted their, uh, quality of life, who was willing to write a statement to that effect.
That, you know, that right there is a shame. That, that did happen, because I just, knock on wood, Councilman Van ain't had COVID. That's why I got this mask on. Ain't nothing wrong with my smell and taste. Trust me. I, I smell it when I go out here tonight, when I take this mask off. Ain't nothing, I thank God that I, I can smell. So I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor, but I think that's a great idea, that we wait, because I can say, I do not, and I'll say it again, I do not want that mess in my community, down the street from me. And along with the ladies that are here tonight. I know they don't. And some of the citizens that lives around it, they're not up here. I told them, I told those two ladies right there. I said, how you get the city council's attention? Fill this room. Fill this room. And we'll take a look at that. Cause that's our constituents that puts us up in this seat.
But are we gonna penalize everybody for the post office?
Hello?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we follow the, the plans of the planning and zoning and deny this request.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to deny, uh, the request. I may make the alternate motion that we delay all C twos until we get through the rules, uh, but we'll go through this process. We have a motion and a second to deny the request. Uh, any other discussion from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Who's.
Uh, Mr. Tucker, so with what we're calling for, um, with the new ordinance, and say that someone does wanna grow in an area, right now, if someone grows, we can't really enforce, you know, an odor, cause it has to be, cause there's, it's, it's subjective. But with this, if someone comes forward and with a specific use permit, the city can give specific guidelines for things like zero odor.
Correct.
Zero this, zero that. So it's not saying that if anything kinda goes in specific use, that they can't. So I just wanna go like, again, punishing cause of the post office. I think people need to have the right to do their business where it's at. But there's places too, that we need to make sure that, you know, that we say like this. And I do think we need to move forward and look at that other ordinance that's, addresses odor, but then again, we run into how subjective that is.
And the special use permit gives you the freedom to do that. So if you look at what may be a marijuana grow in C two, um, in some other place in the city, it may be surrounded by nothing. And so your restrictions that you would put in place under the special use permit may be significantly less than those that are abutting or adjacent to a residential area, which may be much more restrictive with regard to the odors and hours and, and thing, and noise and things like that. But that gives you, the special use permit ordinance gives you the freedom to set those guidelines and parameters.
Okay.
I had a question, if I can ask a que- Ms. Callahan, uh, right now, what can be used in that building?
As a C one local commercial zoning classification, that's left for more of an office setting, restaurants. Um, it, it's, it's the zoning classification that's the closest to residential, um, if there are some around it or behind it. And that's why it requires a special exception for marijuana uses. We kinda look at each area and where it is, or if you have to go through a neighborhood to get to it. Um, it's, it's very limited on the use based on this type of building. They could not put the tire shop back in. They could not put a garage. They can't put any used vehicle repair. Um, so that, that was part of my thought process on recommending approval, is it allows that building to be used. Unfortunately, at this time in our life, it's, uh, marijuana is one of those uses, unless we do the specific use permit. And that will be very beneficial on even future zoning classifications, where there's a building that can't be used for really much of anything, except for a use that's in that C two or, um, those zoning, above zoning classifications. So, um, it's very limited. It is restaurants, offices, medical, um, offices, those types of things, so it's.
And then my second question is this, I, I hear one saying, we're assuming.
Correct.
That it's gonna be a marijuana place. And I don't think that's fair to assume and, and vote on something you're assuming. It should, don't it normally come to you guys, and it's, uh, in particular, what it's going to be versus assuming what we think it's gonna be?
Um, when they, we have to go off of what they state. The reasoning is that they wanna increase, uh, the lease options or the options of others that could lease the building. Um, it is the assumption based on the applicant and past business dealings. Um, but it could be something else, and it would restrict it by not having that, you know, the zoning class, or what he could lease it for. The building, for as long as it's been vacant, um, it's gonna take a lot of work to get it up to code, just regular building code. And then, of course, then they're really working on the, the more ventilation or, um, hoping on the smell part. That's one of the things that we tell them, is like, we really are monitoring the odor from the buildings. So it does take a lot of work, and that's before they can even open.
Thank you.
You know, I was going tonight, but I wasn't going last night. And I doggone well know, Councilman McGee, what's going there. Ain't no assuming to it. Guarantee that. You know? So we, and it's just us playing games up here on this council. We know what's gonna happen. Oh, yeah, we know.
And I, and I must say, you know, I put the motion out on the floor, you know, and, uh, it's far beyond assumptions to get us to this point tonight. We've seen this neighborhood come and plead and beg for us, not on one occasion, not on two occasions, but three occasions. They've been to planning and zoning, they've been to retreats, asking our city council, and the least we can do tonight is to, I understand we are working out this and that that would take place next month, and by this date and by that date. But I think that we owe it to send a message that we will not throw this kinda stuff or throw any of these kind of, uh, businesses in, in neighborhoods, when we have our citizens pleading and, and begging us, you know, to, to respect the neighborhoods. And, you know, we all know how, what got us here tonight, and so, you know, with that, I, you know, stand behind the motion that I've made, and let's just do the right thing. We, we've done this and kicked the can down the road long enough, guys.
So, Mr. Tucker, the question I have is more theoretical, and it may be, uh, in practice. Um, if we deny the change tonight from C one to C two, a different applicant comes next week, and they make a request to rezone from C one to C two, aren't we setting ourselves up for a greater liability if we start to give the appearance that we're spot zoning?
Absolutely, that is a consideration. Uh, but I do think, and Tish, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a six-month.
Yes.
Period from the time a zoning request is denied before it can be reurged. But certainly that is something to be considered. Um, you know, the, the, the standard for denial or approval of zoning is one of reasonableness. Is the council arbitrary and capricious? Um, I think that you have enough evidence here to decide either way, quite frankly. You've had members of the neighborhood who've come and spoke. They're concerned about some of the odors and the proximity to, um, residential areas. That is a factor that courts have looked at, uh, in the past to uphold zoning classifications. And so I think you've got enough evidence that either one could be legally supported, if we were to, need to defend it.
And I ask that question only because, uh, my concern is that between now and February, whatever that date was, let's just say, Ms. Callahan, it's the fourteenth, uh, we have a number of requests to rezone from C one to C two. I don't, in my mind, see how we can justify one over the other versus what my recommendation is gonna be, that we, uh, do nothing, allow it to go through the regular process, uh, that we're setting up, and that we, planning and zoning can vet it accordingly with the teeth to say, we're not spot zoning. We're all looking at these specific classifications. So that, that's my concern. But we have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
A yes is to deny.
No.
Tracy McGee?
No.
Evelyn Hibbs?
No.
Jamie Stout?
No.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
No.
So, Mr. Tucker, I'm gonna make an alternate motion, uh, that between now and the ti- now, you have to clean this up if it's not correct. That between now and the time, we have the new rules concerning, uh, reclassification from C one to C two. Uh, my preference would be, they're all on hold until we go through this process. And that's mine, and that way it's fair to everybody, because I don't wanna be in a situation as a council where we highlight one over the other, and then get tied up in court and may not be able to do anything for years versus months.
You won't be able to ma- to sweep with that broader broom on this agenda item. We'll need to put a separate agenda item on to put a moratorium on any changes from C one to C two, if that's what you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but on this particular item, you can certainly table it to sometime in the future. Um, I would urge not doing, not taking no action, simply because staff does have to republish this, because there is that public hearing component. So when you table it to a date certain, we don't have to republish it, and those who are watching and are interested are aware at the time when this item will be tabled to. But we can certainly bring up for next meeting another item that places a moratorium on any of those zoning classifications pending a special use permit. But as I said, and Mr. Beasie said, as we're moving forward in this, we are gonna move through this very quickly. Um, and the reason why it's taking until February seventh is because we have, uh, several weeks where we do not have meetings due to holidays and things like that.
So, help me clean up my motion. Uh, my motion will be that this item is tabled until the.
Yes.
Uh, new rules.
Yes.
Are in place.
So what, so what we'll need to do is tie these two things together. So this will be approved, uh, presented for your approval on February seventh. So what I would suggest, to be safe, our next council meeting after that is going to be.
Fourteenth.
Uh, the fourteenth would be to table it to that date, and that gives us a week of playroom. Now, if something happens, this goes off the rail, planning commission wants to study it longer, then, since you've tabled it, you have the option to then take action, table it again, without having any detriment to the applicant, well, uh, timing-wise, but other than that, fee and publication is what I'm talking about, any detriment in that regard. And you maintain control over when this is heard.
And we may ask politely for them to accelerate, should they get bottlenecked.
That's absolutely true.
Okay.
So your motion would be to table this item to February fourteenth.
That's my motion.
With staff being directed to bring back another item, um, that discusses a moratorium until the, uh, special use permit is, uh, put in place, is that?
That's my motion as amended.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions from the council?
Roy, I'm sorry, I just misunderstood. Now, once again, wha- what was the reason for not doing it on the seventh?
Um, just to give us a week, a, a week delay in case something happens. So, for example, if the planning commission wants to take some additional time, um, or if there are some research items that they request that we have, then we would ask that, um, they do a special call in order to get this moving faster. But that week delay just gives us a little additional time. There's nothing to say that you couldn't do it on February seventh, but we know how tight deadlines are, and sometimes they don't get met. So that's why I wanted to build in a week, um, to be able to give us additional time to do that.
May I have it recognized?
Yes, Mr. Van.
So, let us get this quite understood tonight. Now, this right here is gonna have to go before the, what, uh, Matt was talking about, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Before, if, 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 as we assume, it's not gonna be a marijuana place, or we assume it is, it's still gonna have to go before what Matt was talking about.
Yes.
That's all I need to know, cause I just, like I said, I just don't want it to just fly by. I know it's election time, but it don't matter to me. Right's right, wrong's wrong.
And, and one other thing to clarify, Councilor Van.
Mm-hmm.
If for some reason, at that February seven, seventh meeting, the council denies adopting the special use permit, then the following week, the act, it comes forward, and you can take whatever option to approve or deny at that time. So you still maintain control over whether you want to approve or deny the application regardless.
Okay. So, that's, that's, that sounds good. Sound good to you, uh, Deputy Mayor, since we only know it's up here?
Motion on the floor, we'll vote on it.
All righty then.
Deputy Mayor, and I'm gonna ask you for, Mr. Tucker's clarity and the rest of the council, about the date. Um, do you have, do we want it a week soon, or is it seventh?
We, we'll wait till eighth.
Okay.
Uh, excuse, I'll wait till the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteen, okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, further discussion. Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Definitely yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes. The item passes, we will now go to item number thirteen.
Consider approval of ordinance number forty-one forty-five A, amending the city of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, chapter seventy-eight, traffic and vehicles, article three, equipment, by adding section seventy-eight dash seventy-seven, coupling devices and towing methods for trailers, semi-trailers, manufactured homes, or towed motor vehicles, by providing for codification, repealer, severability, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, this was discussed at Public Works, and as a reminder, this is, uh, would be an adoption of what already exists in state law. So by adopting this ordinance, you're not making something illegal that once was not. This has been illegal since two thousand and three, when the state first, uh, enacted the statute requiring coupling. And so, um, what, the, the reason for us proposing this ordinance to be adopted in the city code. code is simply to allow any violations to be prosecuted in our municipal court rather than requiring all of them be prosecuted in district court. And so, what this ordinance does is it requires that any towed vehicle have a coupling device that is sufficient to allow it to be towed without whipping or swerving from side to side, plus it does require stay chains or cables as an additional safeguard in case that coupling device were to break. This does leave the penalty open to be established by the municipal judge. As I mentioned, I think at the last Public Works meeting, our recommendation with that fine would be $100. Councilor Van asked today to talk about kind of exactly what coupling devices are and what they look like. So, I was able to find a few and I have a very brief PowerPoint to kind of go through as a visual aid what coupling devices and what would be acceptable for towing. And so, this is the, now, there are a bunch of different brands or anything, these are just purely for illustrative purposes. This is a coupling device which of course fits to a ball on the end of a trailer, or excuse me, on the end of a truck. This is a tow bar with a safety chain and as you can see, the portion that hooks up to the vehicle to be towed is rigid so that if it is being towed, it does not sway back and forth and the safety chains are attached there too and attached to the vehicle being towed. This is how it fits on a Jeep. We use this example because those Jeeps are the ones generally that have the prongs in the very front of it specifically for this purpose, but many vehicles, late model vehicles have those too just for this purpose. And so, this is what it actually looks like with the safety chain. So, as you notice in the ordinance, there is a requirement that if the coupling device fail, there is a chain that's there to ensure that it doesn't, that the device does not hit the ground and that it maintains its stability in order to allow the vehicle that is doing the towing to come completely to a safe stop and to allow the vehicle that is not being towed to fly across the freeway and whatnot. And so, just as an example, Councilor Van asked me what some of them look like and we can announce to the public that Tractor Supply does not have these.
They sure don't.
They had a number of towing ropes and the difference there is the towing ropes are to remove someone from a dangerous position, tow them out of a ditch, things like that. They are not intended to be, to drag a car behind on a state road or a city highway. And so, that's what was available at Tractor Supply, but I was able to find examples of the coupling devices with tow bars and things like that. And so, those are what would be appropriate if someone were wanting to tow a personal vehicle. Now, for commercial vehicles, this provision adopts what was already adopted in state law, which is the federal requirements. So, any of those major tow companies and Councilor Morgan would attest to this if she were here, but they're regulated by federal law as well as state law and so this references that as well. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any question, but Councilor Van, I hope that that was helpful. He asked for visual aids this evening, so happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any discussion for Mr. Tucker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Van.
Yeah, Roy, I went around, I done my homework today. I went to Tractor Supply, they didn't have this. Ones who had this was, I went to the U-Haul place where K-Mark was, he told me they had this also at Harbor Freight.
That's what I found.
But Harbor Freight, he told me, usually one time it's going to break, so that's not quality. And you know, I don't like not quality. So, the next place I went that was O'Reilly's, oh, they had them, they're $150. So, if you want to invest $150 in this, you know, a person can and it worked great. But, I got to thinking also, well, I called, I ain't going to say, what did I call, some towing companies? And I asked them, I said, if I'm stranded on the highway, I mean, on the road here in Muskogee, how much would it cost me? And they said, Ivory, 10 miles, if we hadn't gone enough further than 10 miles, it's $60. So, I seen, I'm glad you, I appreciate your pictures, Roy, what you done, because that Jeep is a prime example of those, you know, like on a four-wheel drive, they got that. But, on a nice vehicle, they don't have that on cars, you know, they don't have where you can hook it unless you go up under the frame. And I'm going to say this, in order for safety purposes, I think I would rather call the wrecker to say, if I had one of those myself and I messed somebody's car up, you know who they're going to look at to mess their car up is me and they might want to sue me. So, that got me to thinking. I changed my scope of thought. If it happened, I would definitely want to go call a towing company, you know, unless that person absolutely, I had one, spent $150 and I could take their car, you know, where they needed to go with it, I would do it. But, for safety purposes, it's best to go ahead and call the towing company. That's just, you know, that's just how I feel. But, it was a good experience today getting out and seeing, you know, the thing up close. And at U-Haul place, they got the little deal where, you know, it's got the, where you hook on your ball, but it's also got this thing where you can put the vehicle in the select two slots and then pull it like that. That's what U-Haul people use. So, like I say, you know, I, because one of the guys told me, said, well, Ivory, it used to be where you could put a pipe, have a chain, put a pipe right there. And I said, I don't think that's the place now. So, you said the ticket's $100, right? If you get caught?
Correct.
I think I'd go ahead and pay the $60. I think, that's just me.
Well, let me give you one better, Councilor Van.
Okay.
As I mentioned, this is already illegal under state law. The maximum fine under state law, I did look it up after you asked me last week, is $500.
It is $500. So, I don't think I'll be pulling no chain with nobody on my truck. I don't know about councilmen up here, but I know I'm not going to do it. You know, I can say, I'm going to say this and I'm going to be quiet. One time, it was an older couple, they were out on the highway and they called me and they were stuck. And this certain towing company here, I called them, they went and picked that vehicle up for them. I told them it was an older couple and they didn't have much money. That's what I was looking at the other day, is people, as councilman, I mean, McGee is always saying, or, you know, people here in Muskogee, we're under poverty. Some people can't afford $60, you know, and so, this towing company went and picked this vehicle up for me, took it to the garage to have it fixed, dropped it off at the garage and I thanked them. They've not only done it one time for me, they've probably done it three times for me. So, like I say, I just think I'd just rather use the towing company instead of trying to go out and buy me a thing and try to help my citizens myself. I turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and I hope I explained something, things today and I have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Van.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion for Mr. Tucker? Do we have a motion to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 13. Any other questions? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes, item number 14.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4153A, granting a non-exclusive permit to Clarity Telecom LLC, aka Blue Peak, for the construction and operation of a cable system in the City of Muskogee, setting an effective date, adding a repealer and severability, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, with pride and glee, I bring this item to you for your consideration. We were approached by a company named Blue Peak. Desi Stoops is here tonight, he does have a brief presentation, but before he begins, I do want to go over the specifics of the ordinance. As you know, our primary cable provider here is Suddenlink and they also provide internet. We, I believe AT&amp;T is still providing cables, internet. Well, Blue Peak is another company that will provide cable and internet and they are, I don't want to say new to Oklahoma, but they're certainly very aggressively marketing to communities of our size. And what is in front of you today is a 10-year permit that would allow them to install infrastructure within our right-of-way so that they can provide the service to our citizens within the community. Now, similar to our franchise agreement with, when we had one with AT&amp;T and the current one we have with Suddenlink, in exchange for that privilege, they will pay a franchise fee in the amount of 5% of gross revenue for cable. Now, we don't have any funds that are due to us based on any telephone or internet, it is purely cable and that is exactly how our agreement reads with Suddenlink as well. And so, the ordinance would allow them to do that and so, this is a 10-year agreement. We are very excited to have them come to Muskogee and install the infrastructure. As you all know, and I don't need to tell you, there has been a plea from many of our citizens to have additional competition within our community for cable and internet service. And so, with that, if I may, ask Mr. Stoops to come forward and here is your PowerPoint, come forward to address the council.
Mr. Stoops.
Mayor, council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Desi Stoops, I grew up in Perry, Oklahoma, graduated from Oklahoma State in 93, been in telecommunications ever since, 28, 30 years, call it. Interesting and such a fun thing, I'm going to tell you a little bit about Blue Peak. Blue Peak has its origins in South Dakota. They're originally vast broadband cable television independent operator of the year 2019. We were acquired by GI Partners, private equity firm out of New York City in February of this year, pardon me, 2021. I came on board in June at that point after a number of times of turning them down, but once I learned that they were actually going to be investing and building into areas where I grew up, communities that I grew up, I was really excited about it. We plan on spending about $250 to $300 million within the state of Oklahoma. We're currently under construction and building out all of Stillwater, all of Enid, Perry, Oklahoma where I grew up, is a satellite of those two main markets, those anchor tenants, as well as Tonkewa and Blackwell. Perry took about three to four months to build, it'll probably be complete by the end of this month with traffic being turned on at the 1st of February. In addition to the markets that I mentioned and still are Enid, Tonkewa, Blackwell, we'll be starting to build in Bartlesville, probably March, April timeframe. In addition to that, next week, I'm actually in Shawnee, Choctaw, and Hara to gain approval. We have Western Oklahoma and I-40 Elk City, Clinton, Weatherford that are already approved. I'll be down in Lawton tomorrow and then Chickasha on Thursday as well as Duncan. Having done this for so long, having the ability to actually bring technology to communities that have been overlooked, let's call it, you know, a lot of council members that I visit with, mayors that I visit with, say, why Muskogee, why Perry, why Stillwater? I'll tell you a couple of things and it's really easy when you think about this. So, your homes have one water supply, your homes have one electricity supply and your homes have one coax that was probably installed in the 80s. If you think about technology advancements over the last 30 years, yet we're still using from a technology, from an internet perspective and from a cable television, a coax speed. What we're doing and what we're proposing that you consider and approve this evening is allowing us to build fiber to every home and every business within Muskogee. We've got it mapped out in our initial high-level design. Our minimum speeds to your residents will be 1 gig internet and fiber is true symmetrical, so 1 gig down, 1 gig up. I urge you when you go home this evening to do a speed test. I was in Perry on Thanksgiving Sunday morning at 5:30 in the morning at my mother's house, Suddenlink is the provider there, she pays, buys 1 gig or 100 meg service and she was getting 38 meg down, 3 meg up. She asked me, what does this mean whenever you guys, I go, you're going to get 1,000 down and 1,000 up. From a technology perspective, this puts Muskogee on par with the New York City, on par with an LA. You literally could attract businesses. I was on the phone with the Economic Development Chairman from Blackwell, looking at trying to bring businesses to then some industrial parks in Blackwell. First thing a lot of them ask is, is there a high-speed internet there? You will now be able to answer, your development committee will be able to respond positively once we start moving forward and should you give a favorable vote this evening. From a commercial perspective, I've kind of fast-forwarded on a number of these slides, it's just high-level. Commercial speeds will be minimum of 2 gig, 2 gig, 5 gig, 10 gig, so commercial speeds is that, 1 gig, 2 gig, 5 gig is residential speeds. We do have a cable television offering with three different levels, a basic which is local channels plus a few cable television channels, it's $50. Then you move into 100-channel range which would be about $100 and then $120 gets you a full range of 170 different channels. Cable or internet prices, full 1 gig, $50 a month. 2 gig from a residential perspective, I want to say $70 or 65 and then 5 gig residential is right around 100. I move forward, fast-forward, it's probably easier to see on the TV, you will have a mixture of aerial. We have a pole attachment agreement with OG&E Power, so we'll use aerial poles where available, we'll do underground boring where the utilities are underground. As a, some examples, here's a Stillwater design, underground and aerial as well, Stillwater owns their own poles, Stillwater Municipal Power, so utilizing them, have a pole attachment agreement with them. I'll fast-forward, there's a Lawton and then Enid, I have a number of these examples, but, you know, at the end of, at the end of, again, I don't want to take up much time, but at the end of the day, we'd be pleased to add Muskogee to our build, construction phase within Oklahoma. We will have a store here in Muskogee with 12 to 15 technicians, customer service, et cetera type folks, part of that facility. It'll be about 15 to 17 million dollar investment that we would pay for within the community and it'd really bring Muskogee up to speed with, from a technology perspective that I believe you guys would enjoy from telehealth to remote workers to virtual learning, distance learning, attracting new businesses, et cetera. At the end of the deck, which I believe you guys all have, once franchise is approved, we have about three, six-month period where we'll be working with our engineering organization with the Civil Public Works Group here permitting. Does Muskogee have any parades that we need to be aware of? Are there any road issues that are being under construction that we need to take consideration to? We'll be transparent, we'll work with the group, with the community with respect to where the zones are that we would build into. Once that's done, you move into, you know, six months out, construction for crews would come in, we would likely have a lay-down yard for conduit, et cetera. There's currently one that sits in Perry that serves north-central Oklahoma, we probably have one around here to serve Muskogee as well as the satellite offices around Muskogee that we'll be targeting here pretty quickly. And then, after that, construction goes, as one neighborhood gets built, they come online. We like, I think, Roy, in the agreement, we anticipated 50% of the city to be done in two years, 90% of the build to be done in three years. That's target, that's goal. Our construction firms actually try to shoot for two-year completion just because, but because they know there's going to be weather delays and things like that. As we get close to construction, all of your residents within the particular zone will get mailers, postcards, once the week of the constructions go on, there's going to get door hangers on their door, letting them know, there'll be a number of 800 numbers, scans that they could call, sign up for email, get updates, et cetera. At the end of the deck, there's some decks that outline who we are, where we're at and yeah, there's a lot for you to digest and I apologize that I had to rush through that, but I want to be mindful of your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Stoops. Do we have any questions concerning this item or motion to approve?
I move for approval, this is an exciting time for Muskogee.
We have five motions in six seconds.
And I don't think, I don't think I even need to say it, but since this ordinance is being heard for the first time, it does require six votes to approve.
We got that many in the motion. Mr. Van.
Mr. Stoops.
Yes, sir.
You was the first, you was the first person I laid eyes on when I come to council on that, correct?
Yes, sir.
You remember what I asked you?
Yes, sir.
What did I ask you?
Let me think, it was an hour and a half ago and I've been trying to catch up here. You asked me what I was doing here and I told you that I was here, I know that.
I asked you what distinguishes your company.
Oh, yeah. That's right. Yes, sir.
So, tell them.
Well, your current incumbent is owned by Altice, which is based in France. Your current incumbent is utilizing, you know, a less-than-up-to-date technology and I believe that, you know, us having a presence here with employees will help solve a lot of the problems that many of your citizens probably... will help solve a lot of the problems that many of your citizens probably have.
Thank you, sir. I turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Stoops, I did want to clarify. I think there will be a store here, a storefront here, is that right?
Yes, sir. That's correct. I can, I wish there were more gifts that I could bring, but hopefully, an infrastructure and a store helps.
Thank you, Mr. Stoops.
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item passes. Item number fifteen.
Receive presentation of financial audit for City of Muskogee Foundation for fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Pardon me, pardon me, Mr. Mayor. I was still thinking about cable TV, so. Yes, this is annual, annual audit report from the City of Muskogee Foundation. Frank Merrick from the, the foundation is here to present, and I will turn the floor over to him, if you don't mind.
Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, Mayor Coleman, City Council. I'd like to report again this year that we got a clean, unqualified audit for the City of Muskogee Foundation, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you may have, but all is, all is well with the accounting side of things.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Merrick concerning the audit for the City of Muskogee Foundation?
And I'll say one thing, it's always, it's always good to see Mr. Merrick.
Yes.
Because you know what? Y'all go to Oklahoma City? Mr. Merrick, they'll take you to the Calamans, a nice restaurant. And I appreciate you taking me to the Calamans when we were in Oklahoma City, Mr. Merrick.
It was my pleasure.
Turn the floor back over.
It's going to get you in trouble. You do it for one, you got to do it for us all.
I'm, I'm just waiting for the calls.
Do we have a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the financial audit for the City of Muskogee Foundation. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen.
Consider approval of resolution number two-eight-eight-eight of the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma, approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Muskogee Municipal Authority, issuing its sales tax revenue note, series two thousand twenty-two, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding with respect to the sale of said note, and approving the proceedings of the authority pertaining to the sale of said note, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the authority pertaining to the year-to-year pledge of certain sales and use tax revenues, and containing other provisions relating thereto, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller, I'm going to ask that unless you want to tell us the same information again, I'm going to move as previously presented.
That's fine with me.
That's my motion.
Second.
For those who may be tuning in late, we heard this presentation in another meeting on tonight, and so, my motion was to move as previously presented. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. The item passes. Item number seventeen.
Consider approval of an amendment to the approved contract between the City of Muskogee and Bird Rides Incorporated, setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Mayor, members of the council, this is just one small addition that was requested by Bird after this was already approved. And the addition is on item number twelve related to the indemnification where Bird indemnifies the city. They did include the following clause, except that Bird's indemnification obligation shall not extend to claims of cities or city employees, agents, or affiliates negligence, or willful misconduct. And so, they are indemnifying the city for any of the conduct that they may have, but they didn't want to indemnify us for our own conduct, which made sense, and we didn't really, in the legal department, have any objection to inclusion of this provision. So, that's the only amendment, but because it was already approved, we were required to bring it back to the council for further consideration of that adding, that additional clause within the indemnification agreement. So, I do recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Do we have any discussions on the amendment to the contract or motion to approve? Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amendment. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number eighteen.
Recognize the appointment of Art Smith as Civil Service Commission appointee of the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number Fifty-seven, serving a five-year term commencing December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, and ending December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-six.
Mr. Tucker.
Mayor, members of the council, this is not an action item. Rather, this is informational and for purposes of the minutes in the future. And so, the Civil Service Commission is established by charter and allows the city to have a representative, the IFF to have a representative, and then the two representatives select a third representative. And so, due to the untimely death of the IFF representative, Meredith Lacy, the union has approved, appointed Art Smith to serve as their representative. The term on that is five years, and just as with other appointments to the Civil Service Commission and the merit system, those positions can be reappointed. And so, no action on this, but we did just want to create a record of it. So, in the future, we wanted to go back and find out when the IFF appointment was made. We'll be able to find that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any questions for Mr. Tucker? Thank you. Item number nineteen.
Receive report on status of Robinson Park improvements, including additional parking.
Mr. Van.
Yes, I asked Mr. Miller, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Councilman Van.
I asked Mr. Miller to give us an update of the parking at Robinson Park by our skate park, and it definitely needs that, and me and Mr. Miller got the, Mr. Miller got the talking. And I hope that we do it, you know, I always say up here, I don't like crumbs. I want steak. We got a nice parking lot of concrete by the bathroom. You know what I'm talking about, Mr. Yuin. Okay, on down there by the skate park, we don't roll crumbs. We want steak, and steak means concrete. We want concrete curves, not asphalt, concrete, to match what we got down towards the other end. If you're going to make something uniform, we need a uniform down on this other end also. I also suggested, Mr. Miller, to Mr. Miller, when we went out there, it's going to be a space, you know, like where the sign says Robinson Park. I made a suggestion to him to put in, put some nice decorative rock going this way, going back to the north, or going back to the south a little bit, to kind of give the little decorative flavor. I like things looking neat and nice, and I think that would be a very good idea. And we want, you know, handicap spaces there, also with signs. So, that's what I'm personally asking for, for our community in Midland Valley that I grew up in, and I think we deserve it. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Miller.
All right.
Mr. Yuin.
All right. Mr. Mayor, council, with regard to the parking lot, it will be all concrete, no asphalt.
Thank you.
We'll have direct off-street parking right there. We, we have room for six vehicles, inclusive of a, of a handicap space. The design is complete. It'll have curb and gutter. It'll have sidewalk around the parking lot. It'll have sidewalk connecting it to the trail. So, we, we, we don't want crumbs. So, we, that is what we are, are doing. And, and also, I know something that you're interested in is the OGN-E replacement lighting. So, I actually spoke with the young lady this morning. She called me and wanted to give me an update. And she said that, as of now, she's very confident that it will be installed in the park within eight weeks.
Wow.
So, that's, yeah, OGN-E is OGN-E, and they will get it when they get it, so. But she, she was very confident it would be within eight weeks that we would have all-new LED lights around the park.
And on those rocks, but I don't know if Mr. Miller, you know, told you this, but if this is the first time you heard of it.
It is, yes.
But if you go look at our church, where you feel about this church, how nice those decorative rocks is around our church? And I'm, that's what I'm talking about, some nice rocks, you know, that's, so people don't be driving up on our grass, you know? And I tease Mr. Miller all the time about Out of Hikes. See, y'all call it Out of Hikes, but I call it The Bentley.
The what?
The Bentley.
The Bentley.
I call it The Bentley. So, Robinson Park and all the other parks need to be just like The Bentley. That's just me. That's in every ward, not just Robinson Park, but every ward. They need to be just like that. And since I got more parks than any other councilmen up here, we try to keep it that way, you know? But I appreciate you giving me a report, and I also should appreciate you, Mayor, because you brought the idea with the lights. I remember. Might as well give credit where credit is due, and you did do that, of course, you know? So, I want to appreciate, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
I appreciate you, Mr. Yuin, for getting that together, and just, you see how good God is? The lady just called you today, right?
Yeah.
Boy, he just comes on, he not, he don't come when you want him, but he's always on time. Thank you, Mr. Yuin.
Very welcome.
And thank you, Mr. Miller. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Any questions from the council? Thank you. Item number twenty.
Consider approval to direct staff to commission a study to investigate parking needs at Rotary Park, and if appropriate, recommend a plan of action for additional parking, or take other necessary action.
Council members, this is my agenda item, and just to mildly piggyback off something that Councilor Van had just mentioned, one of the things that we want to be certain, in particular, to Rotary Park, is that all of our parks that are heavily utilized by our community do have adequate parking. Rotary Park is off of South Twenty-fourth and the southwest quadrant of the city. For those of you who do not know where that park is, it is in a walkable community. It is in a very, very walkable community. Because of that, the residents, from time to time, as well as individual organizations, utilize this park. It has a wonderful splash pad and a large grassy play area. The challenge that we have with Rotary Park is that when we do have large events, many of the residents end up parking on the grass because there is no adequate street parking to sustain a large event. And what this agenda item sets out to do is make certain that we look at the park area itself to have staff make recommendations and a plan of action for how we may be able to convert some of those green spaces into actual parking. This expands the use of that park and makes it more palatable to those residents who use it the most. And so, we don't have any aerials to show or any images to show, other than I'm going to recommend that staff come back with a plan to show us what parking would look like at that park. In particular, we did look at the northwest corner of that park, because when there is a large event, that is where most residents park their vehicles. And I'm going to go into them and say, almost rightfully so, because there's no other place to park. I think we had National Night Out. That was one of the parks that we utilized, and this year, the sponsors, the patrons, used that park almost like never before. And I think it's time that we look at making whatever investment we need to be certain that that park gets the, the parking that it deserves. So, I'm going to recommend approval, that we give direction to staff to come up with a plan of action for additional parking at the Rotary Park. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for that, by that park being in Ward Three, me and Councilman Reed, District. It's a nice park, because I remember when we added the features to it, because those bleachers that the kids, you know, sit on, just like Robinson Park, we didn't want, we all done this. Ain't not I, 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 we all done this. We got their butts off the ground and put them on bleachers, Robinson Park and Rotary Park. The fence they put up at first, with the basketball, I don't know if y'all was up here then, but the basketball, the fence was just four foot high, just like it was Robinson Park. Ball going all out in the street, kids could get to the twenty-fourth street. So, we fought and had to fight for that, to get that fence up, so the ball wouldn't go outside on Twenty-fourth Street. Also, the barbecue grill that we had at Robinson Park, Rotary Park didn't have a barbecue grill. So, we had citizens that participated and raised money to put that barbecue grill there. That's kind of a little history behind it, and I wish, you know, one day that we could put a bathroom over there also, you know? Get, you know, remember when I brought the little, no, the outhouse and the toilet? That's what we need to do over there. Go from the outhouse to the White House with a bathroom at Robinson, at Rotary Park. So, that's just, that's just a few things, in case y'all, people don't know about the little history of what we've done up here as councilmen in there. That's some things we've done to improve Robinson Park, I mean Rotary Park, because it's a great park too, also. Plus, this is in Ward Three, that Councilman Reed, Deputy Mayor. All right then. I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Van. We have a motion and a second on this item. Further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Here, yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty-one.
Discuss and take action to, to direct staff to investigate possible renovation or rehabilitation of the Muskogee Teen Center to allow for expanded citizen use.
I'm going to start this agenda item almost in the form of a challenge to all of us, not just on this council, but throughout the community, that we can't be great and be the same. We have had several concerns expressed from our adult population, especially those adults who have young people, and some adults who just want to have a adequate workout facility. That we need to have a indoor facility that can be used for multiple purposes, particularly indoor basketball. Many of our residents deserve to have the opportunity to have such a facility. Previous conversations with Mr. Miller and others, we know that the roof repair at the Muskogee Teen Center can be up to, or maybe even exceed, the cost of nearly a million dollars. And so, what this agenda item is designed to do is to direct staff to investigate the possibility of either totally rehabbing that facility or tearing it down and building another one, so that we can have the indoor facility that many of our families deserve to have right here in the City of Muskogee. So, without belaboring that point, my motion is to direct staff to investigate possible renovation or rehab, rehabilitation, and I'm going to add, Mr. Tucker, if I'm not incorrect, or reconstruction of the Muskogee Teen Center to allow for expanded citizen use. That's my motion. We have a motion and a second on that item. Any further discuss, let me say this before I go on, that's my part of the discussion. That's a walkable community for a lot of our young people. That is a highly walkable area for a lot of our young people. I'm more interested in seeing that it be rebuilt where it is, versus having them shuttled all over to other places when it's in a viable neighborhood. That's my part of the discussion. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council?
I'd like to say again, Mayor, that's another agenda item that I appreciate you bringing it. This lady in here tonight, I'm not going to call her out, because I don't think she wants me to call her out, but she called me over there one day to go over to the teen center, after they had a big hard rain, and all that water going through those garage doors, I call them, goes right in there, in that front. And in the corner here, you got buckets, okay? In the gym, you got water coming down the wall, and also, I seen Mill do while I was there. So, we are definitely correct about trying to get rid of that building, tear it down, and put something new. I took pictures of it. I don't know if I showed you, but I showed other people. And I think, I thank the lady that's in here tonight for taking me over there and showing it to me. And I'd say, it opened my eyes about a lot of things, because they'd redone that building a long time, you know, quite a while back. But it, it, it really does need to be torn out and redone. Another thing I'd like to say, there's nothing wrong with the community over there where it's at, even though it's across the street from the Gospel Rescue Mission. There's nothing wrong with the Gospel Rescue Mission. I'm on the Gospel Rescue Mission's board. We help people. Some people, sometime, they forget, we ain't always had what we have. Oh, no, I haven't. I still ain't arrived. But just because you were in a poor area- But just because you're in a poor area of town, you can have a nice building in that poor area of town. So that's just me. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We have one citizen sign up to speak to us tonight, Mr. Ivory Van. I'm gonna ask that you give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Ivory Van, forty-three thirty-eight Columbus Street, Muskogee, Columbus seven-four-four-oh-one. Reason I'm saying this tonight is, it's election season, and I know it's election season, and we all, as city councilmen and mayor up here, we all work hard, for nothing, for free. That tells our community right there, we work for free. We get out, we help our constituents. But one thing I hope, and on this election season, let's do not talk about each other or put each other down, because when you do that, if you put Ivory Van down, I got four kids, and I got three grandkids, and they don't want nobody putting their grandfather down. And nobody up here needs to be put down for a free position, to try to get back on their seat. You know, I just don't see it that way. Treat people like you want to be treated. That's my message. And I said, and that's why I wanted these three minutes to say that tonight. Treat people like you want to be treated. If we doing a bad job up here, well, somebody, they'll vote us out. If we're not, they'll keep us. I have no problem with that. But like I say, let's treat each other up here as colleagues with dignity and respect. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, when you go to talk about that person, just put it in your mind, when you talking about somebody's family member. We all children of God, we was made by Him, and that's how I see it. So I just wanted to bring, make that point tonight. And I thank the people, I also thank the people that are running for city council and mayor. You know, everybody want to serve, that's fine. I don't, I'm not mad because somebody's running against me. I'm not mad. They can do a better job than me, that's fine. But please be respectful to one another. Please, that's all I ask. We don't need no postcards in the mail saying how bad we are, blah, blah, blah. Coming to our house, and our kids gotta look at this mess and be talking, you know, be talked about. They don't want their father or mother talked about. So I'm gonna shut up, but I just want, I just want to leave that with you. Let's respect us as colleagues up here. Because that's what we are right now, we're a family. So let's, let's respect each other. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I could suspend the rules for three minutes to discuss Martin Luther King Day. I apologize, I didn't get the announcement in.
Move for approval.
Second.
Three minutes or five minutes, Councilor Reed?
I just need three.
Move for approval. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Once again, apologize, council, that I didn't go through the proper channels this Monday. Okay, I'm sorry, Derek Reed, five fifty South Seventh Street, Muskogee. I apologize, I didn't get, get around. It's Monday in my world, and I slipped, but I can't slip this opportunity to advise the community about next weekend. Next weekend, we will not have a council meeting, because it would be Martin Luther King Day. So I wanted to take this opportunity to remind the community about our annual Martin Luther King Day celebration that will take place here in the city of Muskogee. This is one thing that we pride ourselves, is Muskogee has the only Dr. Martin Luther King Community Center in the state of Oklahoma. And so this is a big celebration that brings people in from all throughout the area. We will, our goal is, and we are very watchful of the COVID numbers, we are in communication with our health department, but I'm gonna present to you the items that we have scheduled, subject to change, you know, depending on the COVID numbers. But at the current time, we're gonna start out that morning at seven-thirty, and I'm talking about Monday, January the seventeenth, at seven-thirty with our annual Martin Luther King pancake breakfast. This is a free breakfast for anyone in the community to come out to have free pancakes and the sides, and it would be from seven-thirty until ten. At ten o'clock AM, the Muskogee Ministerial Alliance will bring to the Martin Luther King Center their annual worship service. This is a service they used to have at Baycon. Couple of years before COVID, they started having the service at the Martin Luther King Center. So once again, at ten o'clock will be the worship service sponsored by the Ministerial Alliance. Thereafter, we will have the parade lineup. The parade will start at twelve o'clock noon. For those who would like to be in the parade, our parade rules are, if you show up, you can get in the parade. We will have the sign-up forms available at the site. We don't want anyone to think I didn't get my application in, and you know, feel like you don't have a place in the parade. If you show up, we'll get you a form to be signed right there on the spot. Our parade route will be as normal, from Twelfth Street to Third Street, down Martin Luther King Street, and the lineup will be in the Eleventh Terrace Hill area, all up and around the areas around Twelfth Street. Then after the parade, we will have a parade after-party, we will have food vendors, we will have a concert event. Our special guest will be Wall Street of Tulsa, Oklahoma, a young lady from Muskogee, Ms. Valerie Harden, and her group will be performing at the after-party. She's a Muskogee native, and this will be our portion of the hundred-and-fiftieth celebration. So that's next Monday, January the seventeenth, all day at the Muskogee Martin Luther King Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Reed. Before we go into item number twenty-two, I'd like to time, take, design time to recognize the presence of Councilor Mary Crawford from Muskogee Nation, one of our counterparts, who serves in a different, same capacity, represents Muskogee Nation. Thank you so much for gracing us with your presence. Item number twenty-two.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A pursuant to Section three oh seven B two Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number Fifty Seven, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B pursuant to Section three oh seven B four Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Daniel Zaniga, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C pursuant to Section three oh seven C eleven and B three Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to economic development, as well as the possible purchase of real property in the southwest quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D pursuant to Section three oh seven C eleven Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to economic development within the urban renewal project area and the northwest quadrant of the city of Muskogee, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
We have a motion to go into executive session?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now convene into executive session. All of those who are not privy to the discussion on tonight, will you please excuse yourself from the room? Thank you, thank you. We will now reconvene from executive session. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Mr. Tucker.
Item twenty-two A pursuant to Section three oh seven B two Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, the city council did convene an executive session to discuss ongoing negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number Fifty Seven. After briefed on the status of negotiations, it became apparent that there were two specific items that needed to be addressed. And so, Mayor, we will take this one at a time. The first would require approval of an MOU between the city and the International Association of Firefighters regarding vacation leave modification. So that'll be a motion.
We have a motion to that effect.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
The second part of those ongoing negotiations will require a motion to approve authorizing a counteroffer to settle the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two collective bargaining agreement between the city and the IFF under the terms discussed in executive session.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
Item B pursuant to Section three oh seven B four Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, the council did convene an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Daniel Zaniga. After being briefed on the status of that claim, I think an appropriate notion would be to approve authorizing the city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim of Daniel Zaniga under the terms discussed in executive session.
We have a motion to that effect.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
Item C pursuant to Section three, excuse me, three oh seven C eleven and B three of Title twenty-five, the city council did convene an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to economic development, as well as the possible purchase of real property in the southwest quadrant of the city. After being briefed on the status of that proposal, it is apparent that no action is necessary at this time. Item twenty-two D pursuant to Section three oh seven C eleven Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, the city council did convene an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to economic development within the urban renewal project area and the northwest quadrant of the city. After being briefed on the status of both of those areas, I think an appropriate motion would be to approve development of a proposal to entice a developer within the urban renewal project area, subject to urban renewal approval, and within the northwest quadrant of the city, under the financial terms as discussed in executive session, and further authorizing the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority Executive Director to negotiate any additional terms to that proposal, and to authorize the mayor to execute a development agreement that may arise from that proposal.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.